And so we'll have a half an hour of those individuals who want to speak in favor of this at five-minute intervals, please. Please state your name.
George Hancock, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've had the pleasure of living in that neighborhood for the last 15 years. It's been about 17 years why it should be changed and developed and so forth, and I'm very happy to call this place my home. I wasn't born in Lynn County, but I voluntarily live here, and I thank God for it every day. My biggest concern is on the Fourth of August, a 30- to 40-ton crane arrived in a private neighborhood, and it blocked all roads. And nobody can tell me who ordered the crane, with the crane removed underground in the vicinity of the lift station. And no one can tell me who paid for the crane.
Are you speaking in favor of this project?
Oh, at this time, I have to be against it based on the issue of sewage.
Okay.
So that is my question. I understand there's some gentlemen here that represent the project, maybe they paid for the crane.
Perhaps. This first half hour is going to be for folks who want to speak in favor of the project, please. We understand. If you don't understand where the crane came from, I can answer to you.
I apologize for breaking any of your policy. I just...
That's okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll see if we can figure out the deal with cranes. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this project, please come forward. All right, same here, none, that half hour is closed. Those opposed to the project, please step forward and say your name.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Daniel Parsley, I'm representing the Glen Environmental Coalition as Project Manager this evening. I have a prepared statement, and I'd like to read first. We, Glen Environmental Coalition Inc., and Jane Fraser, have real property interest in the land known as Twitty Park at the corner of Sea Island Road and Frederica Road. In addition, Sea Island has alleged ownership interest in Twitty Park. Twitty Park is currently in litigation before the Honorable Stephen Kelly of the Glen County Superior Court. In reference to this project, we would like the applicant and the Island Planning Commission to state for the record that nothing missed application and preliminary plat will affect the land known as Twitty Park, and no roads, right-of-way, easements, sewers, water systems, or other aspects of this preliminary plat will affect Twitty Park in any way. To the extent that this representation cannot be given on the record by the applicant, the Island Planning Commission should not approve the application because the ownership of the property is in dispute in the Glen County Superior Court. And I have a copy signed by myself representing the coalition, and a copy signed by Jane Fraser. Would you like to present it to you or to the staff?
Just... Do you like it?
To staff?
Please.
We would like these put in the file.
In the record.
Please. I believe part of your package is supposed to be a GIS check. I checked this morning GIS, and Twitty Park was part of Lake cottages as of this morning. At around 4:45 this afternoon, I cleared that up with GIS. Twitty Park by next Monday should have its own parcel number, and Sea Lake cottages should be separate, and that should be reflected on the website. I don't know why it was like an hour and 15 minutes before this meeting that it took to get it cleared up, and I had to go do a title search to get that all figured out and work with GIS to get that figured out before we came today. But that was the state of things, an hour and 15 minutes before this meeting. So I don't know if staff had all their ducks in row on this, and just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Julian Smith. I live in St. Silens. I'm speaking against this for a number of reasons, and I'm speaking as one of the founders of the Sidney Lanier Environmental Advocacy Team. The first thing I want to object to is that this is a systemic problem, that the planning commissions in Glen County do not have required sidewalks. I've mentioned this before. I mentioned it way...
Required what? Sight...
The planning commissions do not hold sidewalks.
I hear you.
Sidewalks.
Right, sidewalks.
And this is particularly significant in this case because this is a gated community. There is no way for members of the public to go into this property without the permission of one of the owners of lots, or with the permission of the developer. So I encourage this board to ask themselves, why don't we have formal sidewalks with records kept of who's in attendance and what questions are asked and so on, particularly by the public? Now, the project name for this is objectionable. Sea Island cottages. They're not on Sea Island. They are cottages on St. Silens. Why are the developers ashamed of being on St. Silens? I'm going to come back to that in a little bit. There are now 12 vacant lots on this property. 12 vacant lots. There are 19 lots with houses, and now eight proposed new lots. And the difference between the new lots proposed and the vacant lots is it larger? Is it possible that they are now doing this because they're having trouble selling the vacant lots at the exorbitant prices that they have gotten before? And let me pay attention to the ownership of these houses, the information provided by our tax records. Six of the owners of these houses have mailing addresses in Atlanta, one has a mailing address in Macon, Georgia, two in Tennessee, one in Virginia, one in Kentucky, one in Delaware, one in Massachusetts. I'm tired of St. Silens becoming increasingly a place where people have second homes. I would rather, much rather see more property owners who are living here and involved in the community. Now, I find the five property owners who have mailing addresses right here in Glen County, all of their mailing addresses are post office box numbers at the Sea Island Post Office. Here's the thing, Sea Island doesn't have a post office. The so-called Sea Island Post Office is on St. Silens. The chocks at Sea Island are on St. Silens. Why is St. Silens being marketed as something that is somehow part of Sea Island? None of this is, from your point of view, I'm sure, Madam Chair, relevant to the discussion, to the decision you have to make of this preliminary plat. But I hope somebody will object, somebody on the board will object to approving this preliminary plat as really unnecessary and perhaps even premature. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Thank you again. So my issue is sewage, and that's why I mentioned the crane. Our private lift station has an alarm, it has a light, and for the last several years, the homeowners have attempted to negotiate with the water sewer commission. And everybody has mentioned that it's private. But if I'm not mistaken, I'd like to ask a question. Across the street from the entrance to our neighborhood are three commercial buildings. Where does their sewage go? Step one, step two. Eventually, all the sewage on St. Silens ends up under the authority of the county sewage commission. So, but step one for the neighborhood is our private station. And so that's why the issue of the crane. How does a giant machine like that show up? And the homeowners don't know about it? And who's paying for it? And what was it for? And so I'm concerned about sewage. I'm for save water. And so I ask you to, at this time, not approve this until we understand. And if there are gentlemen here that represent the Sea Island company, my question is, the sewage across the street from my entrance, that's sewage, their sewage. Where does their sewage go first? Second. Eventually, the county gets it. Does it cross that road somehow? Is it entering a private lift station? Thank you very much. And I would like the commission to ask that question. Where's this sewage coming from, or is it going?
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
George Rixdale. I'm really not in opposition per se, but I have a question that hasn't been asked. The plat shows an emergency access easement on the west side attached to Frederica Road, and it's not clear how the access or use of that is going to be controlled so that there isn't the ability for this development to pump traffic onto Frederica Road. Is it going to be gated? Is it going to be gated with a padlock? How is it going to be controlled if it's for emergency purposes only? Understand that. If it's truly for emergency purposes, it may not even need to be paved. But it isn't clear from what's been presented here how that's going to be used and how it's going to, how we're going to prevent traffic from coming from this development onto Frederica Road.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
And I've got two questions. Under the subdivision ordinance Glen County, it says, "Every development shall provide a stormwater management plan." Is such a plan the existence for this property?
Would you please repeat your question for staff? Staff, you listening?
Do you hear?
Oh, okay, okay.
Stormwater management plan, you got one?
I did listen and hear your question. Mr. Kilbore, if you would give me one moment, I want to look through my report before I respond to you. Thank you. Mr. Kilbore, would you please tell me which subsection of Section 703 you're referring to?
Section 703, it's 605.2, I think.
Okay, this is a subdivision plat that has to comply with the subdivision regulations?
Right, I understand.
Okay, so Section 703 does not have a requirement for stormwater system to be shut?
So nothing other than 703 is applicable to a preliminary plat, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm saying.
So 606.2, it requires private sewer systems have EVA approval, is not applicable either. Is that what you're saying?
Would you like me to respond?
This application is for preliminary plat.
Right.
Preliminary plat, sections of 703 apply. If this were a development, such as when this was Phase One, and a utility system did not exist, once they received preliminary plat approval, then they would go back into those other sections and have to have all of those sections met, such as standards for private system, standards for stormwater, standards for water and sewer utilities. So if this phase of preliminary plat, Section 703 is all that applies, and that section you cited is not applicable at this stage.
So this is a preliminary plat, and it should stand on its own, should it not? I mean, it doesn't say that this is a preliminary plat that's submitted earlier from the preliminary plat, does it?
It's Phase Five. This is Phase Five of...
It's preliminary plat. It's submitted on a separate application, correct?
Correct.
And so why wouldn't all of that information be included in part of the approval package for this commission?
Why don't you hold your comments until this is through? If you have any more questions or comments, we'll address them.
Okay, my question still is, is this a separate application?
Okay, and will you have any other questions?
I haven't had an answer yet.
Well, you will have answers when you give us all your questions. Well, I'm just saying, we're not...
That's a summary.
Well, what I'm saying is, we're not going back and forth 1-1-1-1 like this. Present what you have. You've got five minutes. If you have questions, present your questions. We'll deal with it.
Thank you for the five minutes. I'm very appreciative of that. And so my question is, why doesn't this preliminary plat stand on its own as a separate application submitted to this commission for approval?
Okay. Thank you. Let me just hold that. Does anyone else would like to speak in opposition to this project?
Madam Chair, Monica Smith. What I'd like to object to is the reference to sewage and water systems. There is no system going in here. There are a few lines going in, and those lines are then going to go into a lift station, which is not a sewage treatment system. There is no treatment going on here. It's going to be pushed out, and it's going to be pushed over to the public treatment plant, just as the sewage that is collected from the few units on Sea Island is pushed down the causeway and then over to the Dunbar Creek Plant. And for that matter, I want to object to the fact that there are still 500 houses on Sea Island on septic tanks. And the application that you have before you, in one part, it says it's going to be private, which means septic tanks, and in another one, it says it's going to be public. Now, this is a mishmash, and we are perpetuating mistakes that have been made in the past, and that account for the fact that our waters are polluted and our systems are overloaded. And I hope that you will consider that, even if it's a preliminary or final or ultimate plat that you're considering. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to this project?
Jeff, at what point are you going to answer my question?
We'll get to it. We'll get to it. I want everyone to have the opportunity to speak in opposition if they do want to speak. We may have other questions that need to be answered as well. Hearing none, seeing none, public comment period is closed. Now, as to some of the questions I would ask, if you want to address the one about the preliminary plat that Mr. Kilbore asked about?
Yes, ma'am. Phase Five of Sea Island Lake cottages was submitted as its own application. It stands alone and was reviewed in accordance with Section 703 of the subdivision ordinance.
Thank you. Also, I think I'd like to ask Mr. Shue to come back up and address this issue about the water sewer, if you could.
The GIS?
They said...
I asked a question about the GIS review, too.
Okay, I don't know if he knows about... We've got GIS, we've got cranes, okay. But there was comment made in the public comment period that because it's private, there are going to be septic tanks, and I'm not sure that's an accurate statement. Could you clarify that for us, please?
It is not going to be septic tanks.
It is not.
We don't have an option to put septic tanks based on other criteria.
Because of acreage, right?
Yes.
Right.
And proximity to the existing systems. There are thresholds to where you can apply. Glen County is in a complete service district, so the truth is, if you're going to build in Glen County, you're supposed to be on the septic, I mean, on the sewer. But if it's not available to you, then you have to go through an application process, and you get a variance from the county commission to allow you to put septic tanks.
But there will be no septic tanks in this...
There will be no septic tanks here, and it's called a private sewer system. I did not make up this terminology. I'm using the terminology that is given to us. So if other people have interpretations of what that means, I think it needs to read the various agencies we have to deal with, and we have to use their terminology.
Okay, I have another question that was asked about the emergency access easement. Do you know, or does anyone in your team know, is that going to be gated? How is that going to be handled?
Currently, it is gated. The temporary access easement that is shown was established when we did Phase Three. At the time, in this community, there was concerns about links of roads with cul-de-sacs, and so to mitigate that, this was what was offered. We have other developments where we put those in. So the fire department has the ability to crash the gate, or the EMC needs to, emergency ambulance needs to come in there, and something's tore up some other place, but it's for emergency use.
Since you platted this...
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any encroachment at all by anything in this project on Twitty Park?
Absolutely not. I've surveyed both properties.
And you've surveyed both properties?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Now, the fact that GIS doesn't have, right, they don't even have Sea Island, I mean, they've got someone else, well, Sea Island property or somebody else, but if there's not going to be encroachment by this project on this plat?
If I can.
Yes.
The GIS incorrectly illustrated that. They were notified. Takes them a little while to get that cleaned out. But I have read the deets, and in my humble opinion, Sea Island Lake Cottage Holdings LLC has no ownership of the park we know as Twitty Park.
And nor will this project influence it in any way. And another question is, have you any idea about the crane that's been brought up?
I have.
A session about the crane.
I have.
Does anyone of your party know anything about the crane? Now, does anyone know anything about the crane?
It wasn't our clients.
Okay.
But I'm not aware of it.
Okay. Did I miss a question?
It wasn't your client, but it was on their property, then?
My client doesn't own any property out there. They're in the process of purchasing this from Sea Island Lake Cottage Holdings. That's who owns the property.
So Sea Island, so the Lake Cottage investors are the Lake Cottage owners?
It's Lake Cottage.
They're the ones we should ask about the crane?
My client doesn't own anything out there. We didn't order a crane. I have no idea why the crane is out there.
You know, I think the issue here, Hannah, and I think everybody can see, is the water sewage issue. It's not necessarily the development issue, it's the water and sewage. And just since our last meeting, how many whole water re-advisories have we had here on our small island? So that's a problem. And it's a problem if these homeowners didn't even know that this crane was coming to lift up and out of the ground, something that is a private system. None of them knew about it. And as a county volunteer, because I volunteer, I'm not paid for my position. I denied being paid. So I do this for free. But you're the county surveyor, correct?
Yeah, I get paid zero dollars and zero cents.
Okay, I think so we do it for the goodness of the community. So my point is... What's that?
I do. I've done it for 24 years.
I understand.
And if you do this, I'll be 28 years that I volunteer.
I understand, but you also work for these people, too, right? Lake Cottage investors?
I have a private company, which is not illegal.
Okay. I didn't... I didn't use...
I didn't say...
My question is, who should I ask for this citizen, why there was a crane? If it's a private station?
Madam Chair, I don't understand why we're talking about cranes. This is a private subdivision. It's gated. Somebody let them in. I would start with security. It's kind of a lot. Why are we carrying on about this crane thing?
It was just a question that came up.
Well, I'm not writing off, it's a safety and health of our community.
Well, right now, we're trying to, what is before us?
Can I still have the floor, too, I believe?
Help yourself, lady.
Thank you. Because I'm trying to learn. The water, and you showed, you were showing standing over here, that it does, it's not on here, but it does cross the street into the professional, the Seabrush Professional Site, correct?
The water system.
Mm-hmm. Because that's what you were, I was looking at as you were pointing it out.
Would you like me to point it out?
We're pointing it out, if we have... Yes, point it out. No, I know the topic, but I mean, like, where is it?
Where does the water? Where does it go? Can't tell you without research, but I'm pretty sure it goes to the water system.
You've been doing this 28 years, so you can't tell me without the cart where that water system goes? You just do this?
For the record, I have been surveying for 43 years.
Okay, so you probably were a part of the Seabrush Professional Site, right?
I was.
Okay, so you should know then where that sewage system goes.
I do not agree with your opinion.
Okay. Thank you. It wasn't intended, it was a statement.
I don't agree with your statement.
Again, my main concern is the water here in our community.
Is the concern where it connects?
The water quality in general, overall. And it's been my concern with almost, with many applicants, not any ones, it's always the, just the lift stations, the overloaded ones, and that's the issue. I don't think anybody denies that's an issue here in our community.
Mr. K, excuse me if I may. What is your specific concern? Because JWSC has determined this to be compliant.
They have not.
No, they're not, they're getting...
Excuse me.
Sorry.
You should be excused because you aren't recognized as her client.
Wait, wait.
You want to impress the chair, you can impress the chair.
Let's not get into this back and forth like this.
I didn't...
Unless there's any more questions for Mr. Shue, can he sit down?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shue.
Madam Chair, I'm...
No, please, no, no, we're through with public comment period.
No, my five minutes are up, and under Article Six, under Article Six...
You can sit down.
It says, "Improvements in existing subdivisions shall be delivered..."
Please sit down, Mr. Kilbore. Mr. Kilbore, will you please sit down?
With the minimum design...
We don't ask you to be removed if you do not...
It was a separate preliminary plat.
Mr. Kilbore.
Why does Six not lie?
We're approved, Mr. Kilbore. You want to go?
Thank you.
He can say it, he can behave himself. All right.
I guess we do. Ordinances typically don't fight, like I thought.
Well, if you just let us do our business here, you know?
It's what frankly I'm trying to do. A lot of the times I'm trying to do that, I get chastised by my fellow commissioners and condescendingly responded to. And quite frankly, I'm tired of it. And somebody has got to stand up for the citizens, and the water quality here is terrible. It's, we're not provided the accurate information, and I want people to know that. We're making decisions based on the information we don't have. So for the record, in every package that I give them this point forward, I want any document that is provided by an applicant. Because I want every bit of information so that I can make the most knowledgeable decision for the community. And right now, I feel like I don't have it.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Is that possible? Yes, ma'am, it is. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion on this item?
Madam Chair, if I could clarify, does every commissioner on this board want every piece of paper that's submitted to staff for review?
I do not. I do not.
Okay, if anyone, in the interest of that, because I want to make sure I'm providing the information, if you could let me know between now and the next meeting, if you do want it, then I'll be sure it's provided to you. it, then I'll be sure it's provided to you.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make this motion to approve preliminary plat as proposed. PP 3553.
Is there a second?
No, second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve PP 3553, Sea Island, Sea Island Lake Cottage is Phase 5. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. Oh, yeah, more discussion, okay, discussion.
And I apologize to prolong this. I would be voting in favor of the proposal because I think that the applicant, in fairness, has tried to work with the system that we have. As a member of this public body, I'm embarrassed, I have sat here for the last half hour for this discussion, which I think shows the depth of the need for us to have a better system of reviewing and functioning as a public body. But I don't think that that's, that the applicant should be drawn into that. But I do feel that a lot of the concerns that have been expressed are serious. I'm optimistic that because we're going to be going into the comprehensive plan, that we can have an opportunity to review again our procedures. And I know that Ms. Thompson has tried to make some systemic changes, but I think she continues to need our help, and we should help her because the staff continues to be shorthanded and we have major needs on the island. But I felt it was important to make that statement, because a lot of the conversation that we, that we just had should not have been necessary. And it's, and I don't believe that the project itself should suffer as a result. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify comment for Commissioner K. I apologize if you felt chastised. That was not my intent. I'll just state it again, there were questions about water quality, but that's a specific. The experts, JWSC, the operators of our system, have made the statement this is a compliant application. So I think for us to sit here and question water quality relative to this specific eight-unit development is not productive. And I agree with the last comment, and I, I think a lot of these comments were not necessary tonight. I think we've made a lot out of this small development. It is Phase 5 of a development that's been around for years. There seems to be some controversial boundary with Twitty Park. That's unfortunate, but it does not seem to encroach on that.
Madam Chair, I can respond. Like I said, it's more about the joint water sewer, which you said they, they've approved and said it's okay, but you know, we are all the time having boil water advisories here, there and everywhere, and lift stations that are over capacity, and, and once we pass preliminary flats and final flats, and then they go to get the taps and they can't, and then it sets us up for failure. So this, it's less about the applicant, but more about, like you said, the process. And not claiming him at all, it's us all working together and helping try to figure out this process and giving us the information necessary. So like I said, it's not about the applicant. It hasn't been around forever, but, and then, and then I'm responding to also private citizens who express concerns about, they didn't even know that the joint water sewer was ever coming in, or the well, the crane was coming in lifting up the water system. And so I feel like as my civic duty, I need to respond and have some type of discussion about it for that citizen, who no one in the, in their neighborhood knew about, not even the homeowners association.
Madam Chair, I call for a question.
There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded to approve PP 3553, Sea Island Cottage, Phase 5. All is in favor, raise your right hand.
Calling the question requires a second and two-thirds vote.
It requires a vote.
To what? Call the question?
Yes, to end debate.
We're going to vote on it. Calling the question by Robert's rules of order doesn't really mean anything. It's not an actual, it's not an actual call the question, it's just something that people say, but it's not natural. If you're cutting off debate, that's what, when you cut off debate, that's when Robert's rules of orders comes in. Calling the question is, is, is a form of cutting off debate. We're not cutting off debate. We don't need a motion.
Only if the board votes.
You know, all those in favor of the motion to approve this, please raise your right All those opposed? Thank you.